Okay, uh, any manager has their nation about tension? Uh, give us a few minutes here, because I don't think any of us has seen this yet. Counsel, have you had enough time to?
I have, I have, yeah.
Yeah, city manager, did you want to give us background on this?
Sure, I will introduce this. In front of you, I have, well, first, I have attached resignation from both Mayor Hedenskog and Counselor Morowski that I received today. I, I have given you a kind of a background of how the council has went forward with this in the past. Due to those two resignations, if you guys choose, you can accept the resignations and declare the vacancy. Once you have declared that vacancy by charter, you have 60 days to fill that vacancy. That is both according to the city charter and Oregon revised statutes. I've, I've given you the time period that each of those positions, the term of those positions. Counselor Morowski's position expires on January 11th, 2027. If you were to fill that position, that position would remain for the remainder of that term. Mayor Hedenskog's position ends January 13th, 2025, and the same would be for that position if you so choose to fill that. I've given you a rough outline of what a calendar would look like to go forward if you chose to take applications that would then, when we've done that in the past, we've given about a two-week period so that people would hear about it. We put out a press release in the morning so that everybody in the public would hear about that. Would take applications for a couple of weeks, they'd be due at City Hall, whatever deadline that you guys came up with. We would provide those applications, once that closed, within a couple of days, we'd provide those applications to you, the council to review and set a date going forward for you to do those interviews. And those would be in the public because there'd be a quorum of you. The final date, the 60 days I put in there would, if you had declared those vacancies to days, that the 60 days is January 12th, 2024.
I'll give Mr. Sullivan, O'Sullivan, one more chance, did you? Please come up to the mic again.
This is an unusual way for any organization to do business. Put something on the agenda, maybe a day at a time, and then not have anything that people can read or see. This does not seem to be the way to do business. But unfortunately, this town is gaining the reputation of being scofflaw city. We don't like what the Constitution says. We can scoff at the law and say, well, that doesn't apply to us, we do things differently here. But please, start showing that you have some integrity and some transparency in the way you do things. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, counsel, you have before you a couple of letters from the mayor, one from the mayor and one from Counselor Morowski. It appears that they've vacated their, their seats. So if you want to recognize that, I would need a motion to declare those seats vacant.
Clarification, clarification. There's been a, there's been a comments about transparent, I think.
I think we need to address that.
That's the rea, that's the reason it's in the agenda. And that's the, and that's the reason that we're, how we're, how you're a lawyer and so on. So, um, um, we want to be, we want to be clear and transparent about what we're doing. So that, so we got point. Lawyers are lawyers on the right, she's heard everything is said. Is there any, is there any issue with the law of what we're talking about, uh, or Lori?
Honest, honest Lori, so Lori's super, no, there's no, there's talk to reality near anything from these law. I can already stand about, I may feel that way, but saying I'm really fast, thirty policy, the recall was just last week. We have this regularly present in San Diego State. Well, and so there is concern, the erroring that the, the, we'll be talking about before, I have forums depending on what, around what council, I don't know, is better, is, well, you know, well, so I figured it's probably appropriate to still have retail, I have the retail players on the mountain, but down slowly, you know, basically, so very curious, so still patient, so wait to appoint somebody to fill one of the, one of them. Uh, and July, I really repeat that, so you pass the forum, just, and, but, uh, come out of thirty three, and they made them get checked. The lower brass, if you clap, there is still one during coming, there's trouble on, so there's, so there's, the city really tends to, but there's any cost, right, crap, crack, or even wolf, a top, kind of, where you have down dollars, without the weight, um, um, areas of very, offering or jet arise. Even within that, a bad, a sad, was really sending stuff, or seeing, stop, or seeing, so, so, which every question, um, or, or, I think that, and say that there's nothing, whatever, nothing wrong with, you, people, like, you, well, about us, something, considering that, and, 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 so, what you're not testing, might, it's somebody that told the, was, too, to, to me, it could, that's, that's, um, so, him, why, we, warn about me, trying to ask them that, before the, the, so, I got them, though, I got them.
No, I know, I need, in the name of, in the name of, yeah, I wanted, yeah, I wanted, very, very, um, because I do, as I do, really, he, and we need to let everyone know. And one, and one of the others, I think, I think, point, point, maybe now, maybe now, I'm married, I didn't, state, it's state. Not only that, only that, there is, there is, we're looking, we're looking at, moving, moving system, while our, our charter, uh, states, states sixty days, election. That I'm, that I'm being told is a flat, a flat, it can't happen, it can't happen. The elections, the elections, this is counting, the county, and so, and so, we would be lucky, we would, and, I don't know, I don't know, time, we have, we're not, we have a time. Longer than, longer than what the charries says, to have our, to have our city, because person, the person, I see that, as, as it would be, it would be failure, failure shift, we, we should do, we didn't do something to that. Uh, to make, uh, to make sure that we, uh, have, continue, have, continue, at least a quorum, um, so, and so, I just want to, I just want to put that out.
Yes, yes, Lori.
The other, I think, because, uh, I spoke to the becoming clerk, make, make, that's, and, and, says, that, that's on it, with, on, to, 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 uh, uh, work, come on, like, you know, like, title, accomplished, but the eighty sixty, I need her since her. That, the, say, sir, it's probably new, pretty bold on that, point, um, and trouble was writ, was the poor, as male, style, and ballot, um, um, the, and, we can, so, when he said that, you need that, we. Well, she, she was, she didn't do, yeah, an upper side on them, but she said that, like, forty-five, drew that is fair, and highest stake amount, prints about, when we from the overseen, you voted, and they're slow, they're sorry, so, and they love that, so, that will give you full gains, the son, and the, the, and, but, yes, the state has for candidate, candidate, across, er, funds, of spring ones, and all that, you. That's why, it's such a, like, you just fly outside, huh, we cannot, do an lesson, do an electric, so, it's one, so, I just, I.
Thank you, thank you.
So I'm still waiting for a motion to accept the resignation of Mayor Ron Hedenskog. Does anybody want to make that?
Before we get to those motions, I just want to add a little bit more to the discussions that have happened the last couple of days. So after we saw the, the results of the recall election from the, what the vote tally was, Counselor Hodges and I myself both reached out to the city attorney to find out what's going to happen next and what the timeline for this is. And my biggest concern right now is leaving the city without a functioning government for our public safety agencies, for our public works department, and, and all the, all the city departments. The, um, the amount of items that have to be approved by the city council, especially an emergency item, I'm not willing to wait ninety days or even four months for a decision to be made on something that's, that needs to be made, uh, sometimes in an emergency, in a day or two. Right now, talking to the city attorney, the three council members who are the subject of the recall are still, uh, except for the, the resignation now of two of them. But they're, they're, if they didn't resign, they would still be city council members for several days or even a few weeks before the voting was certified. Then, to have a special election, we'd have to give notice so people could apply. Then they have to gather the signatures to be put on the, to, for the names to be on the ballot, then there would be the election, then there would be the time to certify the results. And as far as I'm concerned, that's too much time to leave the city without a quorum. And I think the most open process we can do is to maintain a quorum by appointing one more council member to maintain this quorum, and then the count, the three-person council as a quorum decide how to move forward to fill the other two seats. And I think that's the, the best interest of the city, the best interest of our public safety agencies, the public works department, the employees and the citizens of Brookings and the taxpayers.
Looking for, looking for a motion?
Yes.
I motion to, I motion to resign, the mayor, Ron, Ron Scott, or the mayor, as a mayor.
I'll second.
You've called a question?
Counselor Hodges.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor.
Yes, sir.
The motion carries.
I'll move to accept the resignation of Counselor Michelle Morowski and declare the council position four vacant.
I'll second, I'll second.
Counselor.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, so the city manager has given us, I have an outline of filling, filling, filling positions, but I agree with Counselor Martin's assessment. So we have before us the opportunity to appoint, either a mayor or a, a new counselor to the position four. So I am open to, um, motions on that discussion on that.
I, I, I would like, I would like to nominate, nominate, uh, a person of our, we, we, we've been here for, been here for a number of, a number of is shown to be a community, a volunteer, an active member of our community, she's a teacher, she's a coach, she's a mom, amazing children, and if you know her, know her, her husband, like, patiently, so, uh, so that'll be good for these positions. So I would like to nominate, nominate.
For which position?
Uh, position, my position four.
We want to have a discussion first, or do you want to say?
Well, we, normally you would have a second and then you would have discussion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that?
So I, I spent some time this weekend and some time today talking to various people in the community to try to gauge interest of who is interested and serving on the city council, and there are a number of people who are. So I think after this appointment's made, we'll have, um, we can solicit applicants and we'll have a large pool to choose from and a diverse pool to, to fill the other positions. I believe I was a senior in high school when you started work, which was.
Mrs. Fulton, you, you're welcome to come up to the, uh, mic in case somebody has questions.
So Isaac and I both graduated in nineteen ninety-four, which, which this is going to seem like a long time ago, because how long have you worked for the school to? Wow.
You said, oh, I'm, I'm, I mean, come on, and, 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 maybe, and, and, you, and, what are you doing?
No, but, uh, I, I think, uh, I think you, 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 your experience in the community, your knowledge of how the government system works, um, your commitment to Brookings, uh, makes you, um, a very positive, um, um, person to, to fill this position and help the city move forward through this.
I, 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 I agree wholeheartedly, I would, I would, I would, I would really, really like to see you as a position four.
Okay, if there's some more discussion, then I will ask for a motion to, um, Ms. Fulton, how do you spell your first name?
Dunfar.
A R I S T I, thank you. I need a motion to appoint Mrs. Fulton to counsel at position four.
We did, our.
We did.
Oh, that's right, I already have that, you can call the question, please.
Um, Counselor Hodges.
Yes, yeah.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor.
I will abstain, as I'm a lame dot com, this one, so. No, the, um, the, um, the rule is you need a majority of the, you need a majority of the quorum, or two is a majority, because we have a quorum of three tonight, and congratulations, Mrs. Fulton.
The deputy recorder, Brooke, is going to swear you in.
Yes.
They will, blah. You know, like, both, and, and, we, what, uh, because, because we still do, so, as much, where, in, so, and, and, for, for, the, the. She's a politician of the United States. And laws, which, of course, in laws, of the state, chart and charter, can, you know, that's, that's, all, all, kind of, limits, of the city of Brooklyn. The bad is changing, and the sure, and the thing, and, to bear, and staying true, and, 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 defend them, against all of them, outside, and speaking of, against, all of them, what. And, you, you, basically, all things, are, to, you, that's far, and then stands up, against all, and, or, so, I, I mean.
No, partially, just.
These, the city council, where, as, creating a person, this, these, the city council, that, for, for, that's where he's, there is surprise, though, it, but, I'll be, I'll, of course, the, the, my, and some.
Congratulations. Counselor Fulton, you can come and take a seat here, position four is between the city manager and Counselor Martin. I'll shake your hand, after, it's a long trip, I'm, for. Okay, we also have a vacancy for mayor, does the council wish to take any action on that this evening?
Well, I, I think now we need to open a process for, to, to solicit, um, uh, applications from people in the community who want to fill, uh, the mayor's position plus, uh, one other council position, uh, when it becomes available, but start, start collecting, um, applications now. So previously, when, uh, somebody's resigned, I remember when Ursula Hamilton was, uh, appointed, um, several people applied for that, and there was an area process. Can you just tell us how that worked?
Sure, we, we have done both, um, the application process that you're referring to, and we've also done the direct appointments, like, Mrs. Fulton, this evening. In, in an application process, typically speaking, another one that would be memorable would be Brent Hodges, because we ended up with a coin toss, because it was two-two forever. We sat here for a long time. The, um, so we take applications, you will come up with, um, we'll have questions for you to ask them, so that we're asking each of the counselors, the candidate counselors, the same questions, and, um, try and link one of that to maybe like five, ten minutes total each, it depends on the application you got. You guys might change your mind depending on how many applications you receive. And then you will go around a roundtable and, and discuss it, however you guys want, if you, if it's unanimous and you all are wanting to appoint one person, you might narrow it down. You might choose to have a second interview, you might narrow it down to your top two or three, and then you could do it multiple ways. One of the things I would suggest is when you're, um, when we put this out, I think I would advertise the counselor, council, two open elected official council positions. And then once you have, um, the fourth, the, you might, if there's one more seed here, you might appoint a mayor within yourself, and then, um, appoint the next counselor after you have appointed a mayor, because you wouldn't have an empty seat until you've appointed a mayor. That way it gives you more, um, options for the people that are candidates.
So previously, what was the, um, period that was open for people to get a packet and apply?
It was two weeks, so I literally mirrored the last one, which was, that might have been the Hamilton one, actually, now that you say that. Um, Hamilton, Grant, um, Michelle was a direct appointment. Isaac was a direct appointment in two thousand twenty-two, so I, I think Hamilton was the most recent. So two weeks in each of those, we've kind of mirrored the timetable, there's not, there's, you can alter that. I think because everyone's very aware that we're going to have openings, I think you have a captive audience that, like you said, you've been talking to people in the community and there are people interested. So I think two weeks would be a large enough window, I can get it on the website tomorrow, so it would be accessible, um, to everybody for the applications. We have, we'll have them available at City Hall as well, so it would be a full two weeks.
And then will we just schedule a, a special meeting to review those?
I think so.
Session, and at the same time, ask those questions?
Yes. So I, I would distribute, distribute those applications to the council ahead of time, so you could review, so you're not having to spend time reading the resumes. And, and question answers, typically, you ask questions regarding, um, why they wanted to have the position, their experience and volunteer activities within the community that are related, and maybe those that aren't related to the position itself.
So the, the only prerequisites, they have to live in the city of Brookings and be a registered voter?
Correct, and live in the city for twelve months and a registered voter currently, those are the two.
I, 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 I've worked at, in, 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 in the order of.
The order of transparency.
Making sure, making sure that it's well-known, well-known, and what, what the, uh, the, uh, what the, um, requirements, environment, and, and also, how, to, to down, to down, down. And I, I have no, I have no, I, personally, personally.
Well, I won't, I won't obviously be here for this, so I'll withhold my opinion. Counselor Fulton might have the opinion on that.
Um, for me, I think that is a great process, um, from, from hearing, hearing, members, got, for transparency, and, you know, making sure we are going forward, we target it with what we're doing, and we're making sure that, uh, those positions are filled in, in a way in which, that the.
Okay, so I think city manager, you have a consensus of the, of the council to move ahead with.
Okay.
Those plans.
I will go through with that, the two-week time period for the deadline, and I will work with the three of you remaining to talk about a date that we can schedule the interviews, is that, or?
Where's for me? We, I, I would also, I, I meant, um, Counselor Fulton, to tell you, within the next seven days, here's your duty, you're kind of hitting the ground running. Counselor Martin and I were elected, we had two months to prepare for being a city counselor, and you've had five minutes. So, uh, within the next week, the city manager will present you with the city charter, the Oregon Ethics Guide for public officials, the Brookings Comprehensive Plan for the Land Development Code, and Land Development Code, selected ordinances and resolutions, the current city budget, and most recent audit, and a roster of city officials and standing committees. So you'll have some reading to do and, uh, to get up to speed, but thank you. One other, while we're on this G five item, um, as I say, my, my, my days up here are numbered, so, um, I sit as the council president. What that means is, um, when the mayor is not available and the mayor has resigned, and, uh, I'm the next one to sign checks for the, for.
For the city.
City. So I'm not going to be able to do that much longer, so if, I'm ready to relinquish the title, council president, if somebody else is willing to take that and, and have that responsibility, just so we can have an adequate number of check signings for the city. So I'm open to any volunteers.
To be, to be clear, the city charter stands for titles. So there's sixty-day limit, eleven, black mayor, like, president, president, is that correct?
Is that correct?
Council president.
Council president is not, um, an elected position, it's chosen by the council, who is going to be among the council, yeah.
That's fine, and, and, is that part of SRT day?
No, it, it's not related to that at all, so, it, it is only that because, um, we adopt check signers by resolution, and it is by position that the mayor and council president are check signers, if they both are not here in a matter of weeks, as mentioned, then that would just be that much less signer, so you don't have staff signing, which we do have adequate, but people go on vacation and people get sick, so it would be maybe nice to cover that just in case, and it can be redesignated at the time you have a full council, if you choose to do so.
Council president obviously does what I do out here tonight, is lead the meetings, so, um.
And you, you, and, and, what's all that? Are you, are you, are you, are you okay, are you okay?
I'm, I, I can do it, uh, until we get a full five-person council, and then we'll revisit it.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, then I will make a motion to, uh, reassign the council president, uh, title to Counselor Martin from myself. Yeah, sec.
I second, I second that.
There's no discussion, actually, please call the question.
Counselor Fulton. Counselor Schreger.
Yes, yeah.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
The motion.
So congratulations, Counselor Martin, would you like me to finish the meeting, or we?
You might, I, you that.
Go ahead and finish.
Do you want me to finish?
Some more, I, I, two more, I don't.
Okay, okay, so, uh, I believe we're all finished with G five, and we're moving to informational non-action items, the October twenty twenty-three vouchers. And after that, remarks from counselors and city manager. No, thank you very much, Attorney Cooper, we appreciate your being available for us tonight. Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, look, right.
Remarks, I'll start with you, Counselor Hodges.
Um, you know, I, you know, I, I, my first, my first initial, my initial, I mean, I think we're mostly, mostly, uh, just to, just to give my, give my, uh, acknowledge, acknowledge, and sign, do the time, and then you.
You, you, I, 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 I was a mayor.
A mayor, uh, was counselor, counselor, um, um, it's been a heck of a riot, a riot, in my short, my, my, I am here. But I've appreciated, and I know, I know that, uh, it was said earlier.
Said earlier. Maybe Terry about.
Terry about, um, or whoever, whoever.
Probably everyone, but there's, you know, about, about, maybe, or feelings, feelings, things, uh, not in the sound, on, next, I'm, 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 I would say, those, they, those that knew you, knew you, um, outside, outside of the city council, city condition, um, like I do, I do, I would know you really are, are a man with an embalred heart. I know, thank you, thank you, don't brag, you don't brag about, but I know about, I know about you and your family.
Family.
A good one, a good one.
Stayed, and stayed, and I appreciate that, and you guys really, I give a lot, so, thank you. And I don't know, and I don't, I don't, I don't, but I can only, so, say him, and, uh, so, again, I appreciate, I appreciate my, and I'm excited, I'm excited to have Tristan Fulton on board as well, as position four. Counselor, Counselor Fulton.
Counselor Martin?
I wanted to thank you for your time with the council as well. You know, a vote that I really remember, um, where you and I voted. You know, a vote that I really remember, um, where you and I voted one way and the other, everybody else voted a different way. Uh, there was a proposal to spend four hundred thousand dollars on a, on a parking area, which, um, was done. But, um, that no vote caused a delay in that and cut the cost down substantially to a hundred thousand. And, um, the main goal of that was the sidewalks and the curbs and gutters. So, um, I, I know you were always, um, conscious about the, um, about spending public money wise. And, um, not, um, you know, you're, you're making, uh, the, the financial decisions for the city. And, uh, you know, I always appreciated that about you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Go.
Councillor Fulton, you want to make a statement or a remark?
It's been great, sir, you were with you. Um, I'm probably the same citizens, you know, that what I want to do is do this city's business, um, keep being Britain's residents, uh, safe. And a great place to live here, here, bringing in, and voices from out there to, to make sure I, as I do my work here, that I can do it with fidelity, is all, um, with all people.
Thank you, thank you. I'm glad you're here. All right, well, this is, uh, very likely my last meeting, um, so I have a couple of thank yous and then I'll adjourn. First of all, I want to thank the, they're not all here tonight, but the sixteen hundred, sixteen hundred and ninety people who put me here in twenty twenty. Uh, I appreciate the faith that they had in me, um, I also, um, really appreciate my fellow elected officials, which one's sitting here. Councillor, um, Morosky, councillor Alcorn, councillor McKinney, uh, mayor's Jake Peeper, uh, mayor Ron Hedenskog. And city staff, um, you're new here, councillor Fulton, city staff is great, they've been super helpful in every aspect. So I really appreciate their support, they've been great. And many local residents and business owners who have been encouraged to meet and encouraging me for the last three years. My wife Linda, I want Jason Fulton to hear this, uh, I spent like two hundred meetings, I figured, over the last three years, and my wife has been so patient. So I encourage you to, to be patient, so, uh, my wife Linda has been, uh, uber supportive of me. And my son Peter is here tonight, I'm really glad that he's here, he's been very supportive, and my daughter, who lives in Brookings, um, who's a little bit too sick to be here. I appreciate her support too. And most of all, I'm thankful to my Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, who's given me a lot of peace during this time, like you said, it's been a ride. Lots of friction and lots of community stuff going on, and so I'm so thankful to, uh, to him. And the peace that he's given me, so I wish success for the council, and you'll be forward, you have a big year ahead. And, uh, I'm excited to root for you, and I really want the success for the city to continue, so. With that, it's eight thirty-one, meeting is adjourned.